What are they unhappy about?
Yeah, real quick. I just need clarification from the workshop. On the yellow card on the meeting minutes. As to what? What role she played for Washington County? Alyssa, do you see them minutes? There's a. When you spoke at the last meeting, you shared that you were part of. A Washington Commission.
Yeah, the student.
The Student Commission, okay.
What was the full title of that commission again? Was it like the county?
See.
Well, that's okay.
Put down Washington Student Commission.
Okay, that's okay. You don't have to find it out.
Yeah. Thank you.
The official time clock.
It's seven o'clock. You can go. Yeah, don't go back now.
Okay, all right, seven o'clock. Uh, let's call the regular meeting for February of the planning commission order. Can we have both of us please?
Over. Healy.
President.
Hill.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Phillips.
Will be absent.
All Day.
Here.
Rafferty.
Yeah.
And Kowalski.
Here. Okay, well, you have a quorum. Um, next up is the action on the minutes from the regular meeting of January sixth. Can we have someone move the minutes?
So moved.
Uh, moves Hill to support Roberts. And, uh, Michelle had made a change to the minutes. That. Are there any other changes? The minutes? Being on, all in favor of the. Uh, minutes as posted, say aye, aye.
As corrected. As corrected.
As, sorry, as corrected. Thank you. So, uh, all in favor of the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, opposed. None. Okay, the amended minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda. Can we have someone move the agenda for tonight? Oh, yes, sir.
I'd like to move the agenda for this evening, but I'd also like to indicate that I will be abstaining from. New business item A. As, um. The project is using Midwestern Consulting, which I'm an equity partner of, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So, um. As noted for the agenda and the new item, or the new business item, Mr. Cover will be recusing himself. Uh, can we have, so wait, sorry, uh, covert move the agenda. Can we have someone second it?
For.
Uh, support Healy. All in favor of the agenda as amended with covert's recusal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Agenda is approved. Next up, we have a public hearing, a series of text amendments to the zoning ordinance. So with that, um, I think I will. Turn it over to staff at this time, probably Michelle will do the majority of the presentation, I assume.
Okay, I'll read the official notice into the record and then I'll go through.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So you've got a public hearing tonight to consider text amendments to the City of Dexter zoning ordinance. Those amendments include Article Two definitions, Section two point two definitions. Article four nonconformities, Section four point oh five, nonconforming buildings and structures. Article five access parking, loading and sidewalk, Section five oh three, off-street parking, flexibility and application. Article eight special land uses, Section eight point oh two procedures. Article eleven. Form-based code districts, Section eleven point oh three, standard, standards should be standards, applicable to all uses. And Section eleven point one one, design standards. Article. Nineteen P U D, uh, development regulations for planned unit developments, Section nineteen oh five. Application processing procedures and Section eighteen oh nineteen oh eight, phasing and commencement of construction. Discussion and possible action to follow the public hearing. So. Per Section twenty-three oh six of the ordinance, planning commission and council must consider zoning ordinance, um, tax amendments. In accordance with certain procedures, there are four of them. They are all required to be met. Um, uh, at any given time, only one of them is even applicable. And, um, that is the, um, that is the case. Uh, two of them are the case tonight. So it's documentation that's been provided by city staff. Or the zoning Board of Appeals indicating problems, conflicts, et cetera, with the implementation of specific sections. The amendments before you tonight are intended to improve the navigation of the ordinance as well as improve the manner in which regulations. Um, and required information is communicated. Um, the proposed amendments do reflect comments received both from the planning commission and city council. Um, reference material, planning, zoning publications, those aren't applicable in this case. Attorney recommendations, um, to respond to significant law, those are not applicable in this case. And the amendment would promote implementation of the goals and objectives of the master plan. The master plan is the statutory basis upon which the zoning decisions are made. Zoning ordinance must be based upon a plan designated to promote public health, safety and welfare, or general welfare. Additionally, the master plan is the primary officially adopted document, sets forth an agenda for the achievement of the goals. And the policies or objectives. It's a long-range statement of, of general goals and policies aimed at the unified and coordinated development of the city. That complements the goals of nearby, of nearby city governments or governmental units whenever possible. It helps develop a balance of orderly change in a deliberate and controlled manner that permits controlled growth. As such, it provides the basis upon which zoning and land use decisions are made. In this case, the proposed text amendments, uh, allow the planning commission and city council to implement goals and objectives of the master plan. Um, the amendment procedure you're, um, very familiar with, it's. The requirement to hold the public hearing for the zoning enabling act, uh, following the hearing. There's discussion and subsequently, uh, you make a recommendation to city council. Um, when you're ready to do that, or changes that you'd like staff to bring back to you. With the recommendation, planning commission shall include findings based on its consideration of the criteria in Section twenty-three oh five. Or rezoning requests. Um, or. The criteria in Section twenty-three oh six for text amendments. In this case, it's the text amendments. Upon receiving a recommendation and finding from the planning mission, council shall take action. They either approve or deny, or approve subject to changes based on the criteria again, that's already been listed. So. Um, you've seen all of these before, and I'll just go. I won't go into detail by reading all of them. I'll just highlight. Definitions, we're adding a new definition for plot plan, even though you're not going to be looking at plot plan requirements this time. Um, we're putting that definition in, and then the residential cluster development that clears up a minor citation. Nonconformities, this is Section four oh five C, this is where we're taking the, um. The responsibility for determining a lesser variance and enabling the zoning administrator to do that instead of. Forcing an applicant to have to go through that process. The third one is, um, Article five, that's access parking, loading and sidewalks. This is the deviation that planning permission normally would do. Um, it is, um. This amendment is being initiated by city council to add council as a body along with the planning commission to, um. Allow for deviations, um. In a, in for particular developments. So you can see where, um, where it used to be sole planning commission. Um, it's now added to city council and, um. Planning Commission alone is taken out. It's for both bodies to be able to do. Special land use procedures, planning commission action, that again is a citation correction. The form-based code, this is another initiated, uh, I'm sorry. Form-based code, this is the building form standards currently in the ordinance. Um, you've got this section eleven oh three, uh, D, building forms, um, and it has three different. Portions to it, and then the building forms come after that. We're putting the building forms in after standards so that it, not only staff, but. Plan Commission and the general public can see what that reference is instead of having to go find it later. Carlisle Wortman has created this for us because it is in design, it's a PDF, so, um. On this, you'll see alleys were taken out, the different footnotes were, um, were, um, addressed and corrected as directed. Not every building format. Had changes within the, um. Um, the chart of regulations, sometime it was just the, um, the name of it so that it would all flow properly. Excuse me, any questions so far? I know I'm going through this relatively fast for you, but you have seen all this and. Please stop me if you do have any questions. Article nineteen planned, uh, P U D, planning and development regulations for planned unit developments. Were amending the title and making it shorter. Um, that one's pretty easy. And then Section nineteen oh five F two, this is preliminary P U D plan. Um, the effect of approval. Um, we're allowing it to be a twenty-four month approval before an applicant would have to provide that final site plan. And, um. And, and. If a applicant needs some extra time, they just need to contact the zoning administrator, um, within thirty days. Before that plan would expire and planning, and planning commission and council could approve, um, one, uh, twenty-four month extension on that. Preliminary P U D. Plan, approved one. Section nineteen oh eight subsection B commencement and completion of construction. Adding just a couple of things, instead of it being, um, a one-year approval on the final, it's two years. And we're adding some language to make it clear. Um, that it's void unless there's been a written request to extend approval by, um, an applicant. Um, that's submitted to the zoning administrator at least thirty days prior to the expiration. Um, and then it just follows with some details on what the planning commission may, um, be able to, um. To consider in order to recommend a two-year extension, um, and then what council's responsibility is. Excuse me. An extension of a final P U D. An approved final P U D plan would be limited to one two-year extension. Article twenty-one, which is the site plan review section or article, Section twenty-one oh five preliminary site plan review. This has to do with applications. Um, and what some, what an applicant needs to submit, we're clarifying this and providing a little more detail by breaking. That long paragraph up. Into, um, discrete portions. And then making it clear, well, um. What, uh, council sets that fee by resolution. We don't put the fees into the ordinance because. Council changes that on an annual basis, so we'd have to come back and redo the, um, ordinance each time. Um, I've checked with the city attorney, this language is standard and it is appropriate and acceptable. The escrow language is in there too. It wasn't there before. We've now created it into the, um, ordinance. Again, it's subject to the, um, to the resolution of council, which that first paragraph addresses, because that's the one that talks about the fees. Any deposit that isn't used as part of the review process gets refunded. Continuing with the site plan review article, the final site plan, Section twenty-one oh six, uh, subsection A, we're adding, um. That's right. Yes, okay, um, we're just clarifying that following the approval of the preliminary plan. Application for site plan is submitted to the zoning administrator in the manner that's set forth. In twenty-one oh five A, which is the preliminary, so instead of regurgitating that same language. And if it's amended later in the future, we'll have to redo that. It's just one and done. And then, um, uh, Section twenty-one oh six, final site plan subsection G, it's the effect of approval. Um. Approval of that final site plan does authorize the issuance of a. Of a certificate of zoning compliance pursuant to Section twenty-two oh four. Without that, someone could think, oh, I don't have to go through that. I can just. Get my building permit now, or a certificate of occupancy. So we've clarified that by adding Section twenty-two oh four and by adding by the county building department for the building permit. Um, and at the end, the same thing, um, in cases without buildings or structures, approval of a final site plan is authorized again. Same type of language, but it clarifies it for, um, for applicants. Article twenty-one site plan review, Section twenty-one oh eight, the data required for preliminary and final plans, subsection A. That again has been broken up into discrete, uh, um, numbered points, um, so that it's clear what is needed. Um, um, who needs to prepare the site plan and the landscape plan? And then what information is required on a site plan either, um. Depending on the. Type of site plan that's needed, um. The zoning administrator may be able to. Wave or require more information, so that language is put in. And then the text to be added is, um, underlined and read throughout. The table, it adds some additional information. This is all information we actually already do require. But it wasn't in the ordinance, and so we're making it really clear. For everyone going forward. I believe. The one thing, um. On page twenty, location of storm sewers, drains, catch basins, I believe, Mr. Hill, you wanted manholes too. Um, and that did not make it in, so I'm going to write that in now. Section eleven eleven B two, B one, or B I. Um, this again, and two things with this one, one is a cleanup, um, on the subsection, instead of B, it should be C. For design standards and guidelines, uh, the other part, that's initiated by staff, the other part is initiated by council. Um, and that is regarding the primary entrance, fronting on a road. Um, planning commission, the changes, planning commission may permit buildings to face toward and have at least one pedestrian. Entrance facing a side yard, provided the defined pedestrian access routes are provided between the entrance and the public sidewalk. Those are, I've gone through that quickly, I've gone through, I'm sorry, gone through that very quickly. If you have any questions, please let me know. Um, you have two different motions, one for approval or denial as everything's been prevented. Presented, one for approval but based on conditions and any changes you might like to add tonight. And then the third one would be for postponement if you felt that was necessary. And I'm happy to answer any questions. You also have a clean version, um, in your packet right after the, the red line.
Hey, all right, that's good. Thank you, Michelle. Um, so at this time, we can save our questions for Michelle. I'm going to, um, open up the, uh, public hearing. So for anybody. Here that would like to address the planning commission on this item, the tax amendments to the zoning ordinance or online, if you're here in person, if you'd like to step forward and say your name and address. Seeing no one in person. Do we have anybody online? Uh, no, I don't think so.
I'll just read this into the record. On initiation of an amendment, planning commission must hold a public hearing. Uh, properly noticed in accordance with P A one-ten of two, uh, two thousand and six, the Michigan, Michigan zoning enabling act as amended.
Okay, with that, um, I'm correct, there's no one online, right? Just verifying, I'm not, okay. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Um, okay, so we'll close the public hearing at seven eighteen. So with that, planning commission. Can be in discussion. We have, as Michelle indicated, we have some motions that are on page twenty-three of our packet. And as y'all know, we have a cup. Couple of actions that are available for us tonight, approval, uh, denial or approval with some modifications. Well, actually, as well as a postponement. So with that, if there's some, if somebody would like to make a motion, and then we can start a discussion.
I'll make, um. I'll make the motion, dude, I need to read the whole motion.
Just tell me which notion it is.
Number, yeah. Motion, the first one. And. I move, um, that we recommend approval. Of the changes.
Okay, so move till, is there support?
Support.
Support Roberts. Okay, we are now in discussion. So we've seen this a couple of times. I know we've had a lot of comments on some of the items. Um, more so than some of the other ones, but, uh. With that, I'll look for additional comment. Yes.
This is pretty petty. I hate to add to. The application burden, but on page twenty. Page twenty, you said? Yeah. Anyway, it's in the preliminary plan. Um, the location of a garage and carport is. Not, doesn't have to show up until the final plan, and that seemed to me to be kind of a bigger deal. And that we should ask for that on the site plan. The preliminary, as well as finally? Pardon? And the preliminary as well as final? Yeah. I, you know, it just seems like that could be a sort of deal breaker all of a sudden. Oh, we didn't know you were going to put the garage there. You've got to point hand thought about that. So that's.
Yeah, so include accessory buildings as well, so.
Well, that, that was my.
Yeah. Would that? Michelle, though, it. So that's a good point. Yeah, okay, garages. I was thinking like storage buildings, but you'd count that as a garage, I guess. Like if an apartment building that was like just at a storage building.
I think we can add that to that garage carport locations or, um.
Or accessory buildings.
Just make accessory.
Yeah.
Structures.
I'm thinking.
And garages and, and or carports. I'm sad.
Yeah, that seems to cover everything.
Okay. Makes sense.
Additional comments, thoughts? Yes, Mr. Marsh.
Was Section twenty-two removed from this, or Article twenty-two?
Yes. Article twenty-two is removed. You'll get that next month.
That was, okay.
Yep, that was the plot point in four minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I will have an update for you if it's like. Um, I can do that as part of my, uh, my CDM report.
Okay. Other question, comments? So, um, I will. So. I'll point out one of the issues that I had a big problem with, um, is regarding the, on page twenty-one, it's the, uh, the placement. The primary building entrances. Um, so that one is still, and I know that was a direction of city council, but I mean, I am still one hundred percent opposed to that, so I don't know. I don't know if it would go as far as voting against the amendments because that's included in it. But I feel really strongly that. That is, it's unwarranted, I think, for one, and that may get us buildings more like the senior center under construction, which in my personal. Viewpoint is. Is flies in the face of everything we've tried to do along the Baker Road corridor so far. So one question I have regarding that though too is this language where it says. Um, and face a side yard. Would, do you think the door on the side of the senior center right now would count as a pedestrian entrance? Because right now on that, that side, you know, the, the main entrance going to the wellness center, they have a door. But. It's so, it's an egress. I mean, it's probably an emergency egress door, I'm guessing.
Right, if, if. If this were in place when the senior center came in. We would have, we'd be asking for a side yard. There, other than this particular development, and, and you have to remember the history. That, that this, this whole town center was, um, planned and developed. On, um, there are no other. Developments that have a rear entrance. And so the language that's proposed here would not have helped the senior center in this case. They would have still needed to go for a variance. But this does reflect. The conditions that are on the corridor. And allows the planning commission to consider those as you did for the, the. The last one that was done was, um, uh, Mr. Brower's building when he took, when he redid, um, the former bowling alley. So, um. Your. The master plan and the ordinance. Still wants. That front facing. Entrance, this just gives you the opportunity to consider it like you have.
But I guess the, the only question, like. So what exactly is the pedestrian? I guess what I'm trying to say is again, if you look at that, the senior center, to use that, there is a door there.
There, but that would not be considered in this context because it's not been created as a entrance. It's just an emergency exit.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear, like.
Yeah.
Primary entrance.
The point. Yeah. The point above this requires the entrance onto the public road. The senior center doesn't have them. So. It wouldn't qualify because it doesn't have that. Entering the public road, right?
Under the.
So.
The first pair under.
Right there.
Yeah.
Under, uh, hi.
At least, at least one pedestrian. So the way I read this, you could have your entry, if we're using the senior center, I'd need an entry at Baker Road, and I could have an entry along the side.
I'm glad you bring that up. That's not the intent of it.
Okay.
The intent was building shelf front. And maybe the word I need to put in there is however, the planning commission may permit buildings to face. Toward and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing the side yard. This qualifies and gives you a relief bell. So if. That intent isn't clear, we need to fix it.
So the senior center might qualify if it would have had a sidewalk to the side entry. Plaza area, because that area to the. South is like a patio plaza area. So if I had a sidewalk to that, then I would qualify.
A sidewalk to it from the.
From Baker.
From, but yes, yes, that could, yes.
Let's see, kind of.
And that was, that was. There were conversations around that. A little bit, so.
I, I like the notion of adding however the planning commission may allow. The way it's written to me, I was like, oh, they have to have.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thoughts, Kyle, do you have something else?
Sure, so, um, one. I. So to Michelle's point, the senior center was. Kind of planned and baked into that whole development from the start. Now, if something like that came through. Now we would know to probably request. Of site orientation that would aid. A primary frontage facing Baker, but you know, the thing was already built, so that's kind of how that.
But not really.
Just thinking about how the senior center kind of made its way into that.
But it wasn't built, though, that's.
No, the site was planned for.
Site was already.
But I guess so.
For a building to have a rear entrance, but it never got built when all of that was approved and planted back in.
But I guess like I don't understand that because the site. It wasn't designed, it, it was just a parking lot there, so it's, it's not like it mattered whether the entrance was off the, but you could still have an entrance on the front, just like the pharmacy.
But you wouldn't have also built that site with a detention base along the front of you.
Right, there was that big ditch in front.
You still could, I guess, so, okay, well, all right, I don't want to get in this, so, all right, I guess.
So we would know probably. Back few steps before, hey, this is going to become a problem when you go to build a building here and it's gonna.
Well, you could still put a front door in the place right now. That's what I don't.
You're right.
But you can't make it any, any accessible and in, in. But you can't make it any more accessible, and in, in front, the senior center was a cost thing.
So you could, I guess, my only point is, I think you, you could have made a front door on that place. I don't care how it was designed or master planned, you could have put a front door on there, or some kind of front. Either on the front of Baker Road or along that side, I think, even with the grade change.
Right.
You could have done it, so I don't know how often.
ADA accessibility comes from the back.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's my only point, is I think like, if, if you look at every other single building along Baker Road. Every single one has a front door, or at least the door right like Brower's building. So I think like Brower's building is okay, but if we. Well, I guess you're putting a however in here, so.
Right, we're putting a however, the, 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 the main point of the. Of the regulations still goes to the heart of the goals and objectives in your master plan. It's that front entrance facing the road, walkability, et cetera. But there may be situations either existing, or just. Due to siteography, size, et cetera. May, may necessitate that kind of flexibility.
Okay, so I guess, all right, I'll stop, I know we have a long agenda, but I think.
So, but I mean, something, you said something earlier. I know Mr. Hill made the motion to approve as presented, and we're gonna have to amend it. So that it's the second motion, because there's gonna be conditions.
Yeah, there's gonna be.
So, while I am not, I'm not saying you need to do this. I'm offering you and others who may feel the same way as you Matt. If you do not like that particular one, then you would, you would make your motion. So that you recommend approval of everything but that one. Yours, it, remember, you're recommending by.
Right.
So it goes to city council, you have your comments on the record, and council can either go with it or not. But I think that's what you're looking for, is how do you get your voice heard?
Yeah, kind, kind of, but, and I think it, it's being heard, cause I'm sure if my concerns are related to, to council, so I think, um. But what, so right now, Tom, you kind of added the however in there, so I think that that right there is a little different than your, than your motion. So we'll need that, the motion amended to include the however. And I guess it, it seems like if the rest of the commission is okay with, oh, sorry, did you? Yes.
So it's however, so does that mean it doesn't have to have a front entrance? Along the street frontage, or is it in lieu, like, is it in lieu of an entrance on?
So.
Or in addition to?
It is, if you feel. That the primary front entrance doesn't have to be, you're able to allow a side.
So it still remains, it shall front towards the, and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing a public road. However, the planning commission may blah, 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 right?
However, means to me that that, the front entrance doesn't have to be on the.
Well, that's correct, right.
No, the key is, sorry, go ahead.
Does the front of the building have to have the door?
Yes, that's the front entrance.
Yeah, yeah, I guess like what makes, right, anyway.
You can imagine if there, there had been sort of planning those three buildings as a set. To go to more of a cluster sort of feeling, so. You know, they could, you know, they could have had, had them facing, I think the part that's so hard about the senior center now, it's the back. You know, there's a building that's turned its back on the city, and I, that's, I think that's the part that is. Difficult.
Yes, I'm trying to.
Yeah, but you know, a different kind of orientation.
Think through how that.
So to Allison's point. BI has the word shall. BI one says may. That's where the difference is. So. One allows you, doesn't force you to, but allows you to, in an event that you think. The front entrance doesn't work, it allows you to, to make that change.
To have the front entrance, primary entrance on the side yard.
Correct.
But it's still gonna require an entrance on the public street.
No, and I think you just hit, I think you just.
You have to add however, in lieu.
Yeah.
In lieu, that, that's, that's the part.
Yeah, we're missing.
You're missing something that negates one.
That counteracts the.
I think it's, I think it's however, the planning commission may permit. The primary. Entrance, not buildings, to face toward and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing a side yard. Does that make more sense to you all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, okay, my last, oh, sorry, no, you have a question.
No, I was just gonna say, and this might help that in my perspective, when I read it, that shall means that, okay, this is, it has to be at the front. And that may allows you to either say that, yes, we see the circumstance for whatever the circumstance is, and we allow it. Or no, we don't see the circumstance and it shall be at front, but this still gives, again, the, the. Applicant, if they want to go to ZBA, they can go to ZBA, right, take it to the next step. But that gives you that may, that if you see the circumstances, you're like, okay. Let's just go ahead, it makes sense for whatever reason, that gives you that. Chance to, to do it, otherwise, in the, in the circumstance that, to me, it's only the. The I, then it means that anything that is not at front has to direct, you know, go to ZBA. In, in that sense for the applicant.
Couldn't we just take out?
Okay.
I, and make it just the one, that would become the I, cause it's already in the code, you have to face forward. So we don't need to say that again.
I don't know, I wouldn't wanna.
Well, all this provision is saying, okay, this is one aspect that. Planning commission may be able to, you know, allow deviation. And it doesn't have to go to ZBA.
I just wanted to be clear.
Clear. And I think.
There still has to be a door.
Doesn't have to be, that's already in the, that's baked in earlier, in the code, everything's facing forward. But here's one. One thing you, we can deviate on the code. Deviate the code.
Yeah, however.
And just say, yeah, that's what that does, all right, maybe however, or the planning, I don't know. It's just saying, okay, here's a chance, I mean, the, the planning commission may, we can do, we can deviate.
So that would, correct, right, like we did, I guess, on, on the Brower building, did, did we, how do we do that, then, was that a deviation?
Yeah, that was a deviation.
But if it was.
It was loose, it was loose code.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, it doesn't fit here, okay.
It, right, it wasn't, this is written totally different than the previous.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So.
So, I, I think, right, and I think this gets to. Sorry, I keep using, is that, well, this would not allow this, this wording would not allow the senior center as built. But it would allow the Brower building as built.
Right.
Okay.
That's a really succinct way of saying.
Okay, all right, then I'm done, okay, anything, so, um. Additional camera, some additional points, is there anything else worth discussing, or right now, the, and I forgot who seconded it, I think it was. Yeah, um, your motion has been amended to add the word however. So I guess.
Add accessory structures to H in the table regarding multiple family developments for preliminary. And then add however, and primary entrance, instead of building in C two BI one. And then add manholes to the table, the, the three changes.
Okay.
But there's one comment, um, in lieu of, doesn't make sense to me also, that's not in there now.
I haven't put it in, but if you think however, in lieu of, or put in lieu of with however.
I don't care, whatever.
If, if, if you're not sure that it's clear without it, then we should put it in. If you're comfortable that without it, you are clear, we wouldn't need to go.
I think with the additional wording that you added, it might be clear, do you mind reading what it would sound now?
So, starting with building shelf front toward and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing onto the road. However, the planning commission may permit the primary entrance. To face toward and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing a side yard. Provided that the defined pedestrian access routes are provided between the entrance and the side, public sidewalk.
Okay. I think it's clear.
Have your sign.
But the. But now you say there is a door, may allow, may permit. The main entrance, you said?
Primary entrance.
To face forward. And have at least one.
No, your first one is shall have at least one. However, the planning commission may permit the primary entrance. To face toward.
Which then.
Oh, then I can take out this.
Nope.
Permit buildings to.
And permit, um, at least one pedestrian entrance facing the side yard.
That makes it two entrances, because now you're saying that the planning commission may permit. The primary entrance to face forward.
And you know, you, the second part qualifies that, it changes it.
That, that's why, that's why I would think. That when you talk about a side entrance, that that would be in lieu of the one.
Sorry, what I'm reading, what I'm reading, Michelle, is not the I, I'm reading number one.
Right.
The planning commission may permit the front entrance, that's what you added, the front entrance to face forward.
To face toward and at least.
Towards.
An entrance facing the side yard.
Oh, okay.
I, the other thing I can put is, instead of however, is after the word road. Except that. Or with, um. What did I want to say that? Except the planning commission may permit the primary entrance to face the side yard, provided.
All be under I.
It would all be under I.
I like that better.
Yeah, actually. Yes, that's still. Yeah.
Except.
Yeah.
Planning commission may permit.
Separate to me means you have this here and you have a quality gate.
Yeah.
I, I want to go back to in lieu of, cause that, the way I read it. Is because we're asking for the pedestrian access routes, so it sounds like, okay, if you want, you can put. This door facing the side, but you still need. A sidewalk, basically, to get to the one facing on, on the, facing the street, and I, I think what we want to do is say. You know, that we can move that to the side, I mean, I remember this discussion when all came up. And the first time we went through approval, I was like, well, can we change what we consider the. You know, the front of the building, no, the front of the building is what faces the street.
The, except, this would allow you to accept it, to allow the front entrance to be to the side.
The side.
And a sidewalk.
That has to lead to it.
There has to be a sidewalk that then leads to the public sidewalk. Whereas if you're on the front, you've got the front entrance, you've got a sidewalk that's already required to go.
You can put it on the side, but you need to have a clearly defined front access. Again, like the Brower building, it's clear, the sidewalk is right there, and then the entrance is right there, so.
Right, cause, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, I think we're clear, so we made some amendment. Well, the combination you, you just did, Michelle, are you capable of kind of reading that?
Reading again.
Yes, cause Mr. Hill, since he made the motion.
Building shelf front towards and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing onto the public road. Except the planning commission may permit the primary entrance to face a side yard. Provided that define, that a defined pedestrian access route is provided between the entrance and the public sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm more. All right. Okay, so, um, Mr. Hill, are you, uh, you support the amended motion?
I do, does that mean, um. As was mentioned, that we need to, that I need to change the motion from the first to the second?
Correct, that, that's fine.
Okay. So I will do that.
Okay, and Roberts, do you still support? Okay. Everybody's claiming questions, good, okay, I think we're through discussion, could we? Have a roll call.
Roberts, yes, Hill.
Yes.
Pete Lee.
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
That's absent, Alda.
Yes.
Paulski.
Yes. Okay, forward, all right, moving on, pre-race citizen participation, we have none tonight. Um, reports of officers, chairman report, uh, one thing I was gonna add, I, I mentioned this to Michelle early, uh, last week at some time. And there is an item in our CIP, but in the next month or two, I asked if Michelle could put a, a little bit of background regarding the, uh. Order to border connection trail from Huron Farms, or whatever, what's Orchard Hills, your subdivision, basically. To the border to border trail at that location, I know this is an item that's been looked at in the past, the council had no interest in the past. Because there's lots of reasons, I mean, it's, it's a tremendously challenged, uh, location, graves, railroad tracks, I mean, trees, everything's in there. However, I think that, um, previously, the railroad, I know the ownership was extremely adverse to anything going anywhere near their railroad. Things have changed a little bit, things in the harbor have changed a little bit as far as connections and things, so. I think that it's, it's worth, I know it's not cheap, but I think it's, it's really worth it to this community to, for us to look at that again. I think that would be such an essential connection that would really complete a loop within the city that. I think it's worth looking at again, so I, I'm just asking staff that, if, um, again, just a little bit of background work, like, when did we look at it? A couple of years ago, what were the numbers, and, and to see ultimately if it's worth our discussion as a planning commission, if we give it some. Some legs, so to speak, and then ultimately, obviously, we go up towards city council to see whether or not. This could be an item that we can more seriously consider, uh, trying to pursue in the future. So, that was it, that was my report, uh, anything else from planning commissioners here at this time, did we have any ZBA meeting?
Yes, there was one, but I was absent, so I have to rely on staff.
Well, I can probably fill you in.
Okay, were you there?
So it was, yeah, it was for a project.
Oh, okay.
And Jenna did a great job prepping everything for us, and it went very well, you know, CBA is great. So they got, uh, approval on what we were asking for. Um, and so, basically, it's a detached garage, existing house, existing detached garage. It's like two and a half feet from the house. And there's an old stair, and it needs to be, it's an exterior stair, it's in bad condition. And actually, there's not enough space, cause you need a three feet wide stair based on code. So there's not enough space between the two structures to put a stair. So the idea was that we would actually connect the two structures and put the stair in a new inside, uh, little entrance.
And then it makes it non-conforming, because you're connecting on.
Cause, well, because the garage was three point seven to three point nine feet off the property line. So now, you see, it's okay as a detached garage, which is three feet, but once you connect it, it's gotta be five.
Okay.
So that seems like, that's what came up.
Reasonable case.
So, one thing that, one thing that, to follow up on that, which is actually probably relevant to planning, was that, is there any? And Jenna said, maybe there is something going on, but, you know, when we, when stuff comes through ZBA. You know, like, there's probably other garages in the city that have this existing three foot. Yeah, and maybe people, especially, you know, this guy's getting older, you know, he doesn't want to walk in slippery steps, like, you know, it'll happen. So is it worth kind of looking at some of these things that come through? DBA, when, especially when we get into the real nuts and bolts of the zoning update and saying, eh, should we kind of? Is there some way to code the language that even if a garage is attached, you know, it can go to that three feet line?
The difficulty with this is, it creates a non-conformity. And the ZBA is the one that's unable to deal with non-conformities in that way. We can do some research to see how other communities handle these types of things, um, and bring it back to you.
It's like, yeah, but then, you know, there are other things where, well, they started it as a garage, and now they've kind of made it into a rec room, so it's like, kind of this.
Yeah.
There, there may be a way to kind of get that language right.
Absolutely. Uh, anything else?
Comment on that?
Oh, sure.
There's a certain amount of speculation there, that there are a lot of other places that are gonna run into this, and this one crapped up. But is it worth going through a total relook at the ordinance to see if we, if it's possible to cover that?
Well, or just, yeah, if, if it doesn't happen that often, exactly, I think that, that'd be something if staff could look like, how often does this kind of thing come up? Exactly, if it, and there were the recent changes to the zoning ordinance. Exactly, if it, and there were the recent changes to the zoning ordinance, which allowed you guys to do, um, that we just approved, some modifications to the non-conformity. But if staff wants to look into it, it's to see how often, yeah, I can't imagine that comes up very often, but it's a simple tweak, it might be.
But to Kyle's point, for sure, when there are items that come across CBA a lot, that is definitely a red flag and a trigger for us to bring recommendations to you all, um, for text them.
Or at least explore the possibility of bringing it to us.
Hmm, right.
Yeah, great. Perfect. Hey, any other commissioner items?
Oh, yeah, I have another item too. So I think it should be brought up for discussion with the group, um, with Kentwood. I was involved, uh, with the early concepts, I'm not part of it now, but I was, you know, I had a, I worked with Browns on some concepts, and I think it got us towards where they're going now, um, and I'm very happy about that, um, but does that put me in a position where I should recuse myself from the voting?
Are you involved with it now?
No.
Have you been through?
But it probably has.
Well, after it's been, since it's been submitted, have you been part of the?
No.
The plan since it's been submitted, so I don't, I mean, I'll look, but I don't see an issue with that, if you've not.
So the only question. Financial benefit to you. We don't have a financial benefit for Kim's point, the only question for you is, can you, um, provide an unbiased?
I believe that I can.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm comfortable with that, but, yeah, thank you for mentioning it. Okay, um, anything else, sorry, oh, ex officio, our council, our new council member.
Hello.
So, introduction.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, and, um, this is my second meeting with you all technically, but I appreciate the chance of, um, giving you a little bit of a background why I'm sitting here, uh, tonight. Um, I, I joined council, I was appointed to council actually in July of twenty one, and then, um, um, elected to my seat, and most of my time with before council as part of my work with the city was part of the arts and culture committee. And after being on the council, um, I continued there as the representative with the arts and culture committee. Um, but also with that, um, appointment, initial appointment came that I sat on ZBA. And that made me very interested in the planning aspect of, um, of, um, our city. Um, so when, um, council member Hubbard and I were having some conversations and her interest of going back to ACH and, um, I was like, oh, that's a great opportunity, because I'm becoming more interested in, in planning, so I, in September, I had a chance to go to the Michigan Planning, uh, Conference and take the Citizen Planner Certification with, um, MSU, um, Extension to get myself a little bit more familiar, of course, there's so much, and I'm, um, looking forward to, um, learn from all of you at, at the table and, um, participate, so. Uh, uh, to answer your questions, yes, I, I very much voluntarily am sitting, sitting here and, and very much interested, um, in this conversation as, um, what I also, my, um, approach and I, was something that I, whether at this table or at the council table or, um, back in ACH, is very important to me is fostering the relationship of the council and all of our committees and commissions. Um, we have a great community and our community is not just, um, us and the citizens, um, but it's also us at various committees and commissions, and keeping that sense of community is very important to me. Um, so that's my introduction, if, um, another item that I have sort of an update for you, um, as many of you probably know by now that we have a vacancy on the city council. Council member Michelle's resigned, and, um, we have, um, had, we opened for applications until, um, January twenty seventh, three o'clock, and we have, um, seven applicants that are interested to be, um, appointed to the council. Um, I know some of us have been, um, having a chance of, um, meeting or having discussions with, um, those, um, candidates and, and see their interests, it's, um, they, they come from all aspects of our, um, Dexter, and, um, it's very interesting and heartwarming, actually, to see that many of them are new, want to be newly engaged with, um, with the community service, so it's, it's really nice to see that. Hopefully, and potentially, we'll have a vote on Monday and, um, have a new, um, council member appointed to, um, this will be for two years until twenty twenty six, um, general election, and we go from there.
Are we privy to the names of the people?
Yes, they were, um, in the packet, um, supplemental, probably, for January twenty seventh. Um, so you should be able to find them on the, um, Ray has the list back there, so you can talk with him later on as well.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, very exciting, they, they said earlier, we are the most exciting, uh, commission by far.
I look forward to it.
So, alright, great, um, community development report, oh, sorry, Jen.
Sorry, um, so one, one new thing is that we wanted our student representative, Melissa, um, to have just an opportunity in this section as well, to just kind of, you know, talk about anything that might be going on. Um, give us a little update about potentially the Washington County Board, um, that she sits on, or what might be happening um, at school, or, you know, her thoughts about anything that we talk about here.
Okay, was our student rep ready for this?
Yeah.
If you, Melissa, if you don't have anything, you don't have to, it's just an opportunity if you do.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, yeah, if you want to talk, make sure.
Um, I don't know if this is very relevant, but from what I last heard about, um, Dexter High School, is there's like a couple of students that are planning on making it mandatory for teachers to have, like, um, I believe it's like epilepsy training, seizure training, and like, what to do in response to a situation where such thing happens. Um, and I think that's pretty interesting, I don't know if this is like relevant to this committee, but.
Absolutely.
Um, and I'm pretty sure, well, from the section that I'm on regarding the Washington Youth Commission, I'm, we are planning a, I believe it's like a domestic abuse, um, awareness little thing, I don't recall if it's like a fundraiser or anything, but I'm also pretty sure that NHS is doing a dietary journey, so I'll update on that next meeting.
That's good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now with, I think we're ready for our community development report.
Okay, uh, staff's report was part of the supplement that went out to you on Saturday, I truly appreciate your patience with, um, um, the, um, lateness of it, excuse me. I don't have any additional updates, if you have any questions on the report. Um, Jenna also passed out for you, um, the detailed information regarding the second street walking tour that's scheduled for February twenty second, um, she's put together a very thorough packet. Um, um, she's been spearheading the master plan, excuse me, uh, housing readiness amendment, and she's working directly with Carla Wortman, so if you've got any questions, feel free to email us or ask now while we're here, if you can answer them.
Questions, yeah, do you want to share something?
Yeah, if you don't mind, so right now, I do have Kyle and Matt as facilitators for this, surprise.
Oh, okay.
Uh, which, February twen-
February twenty second.
I'm gonna be gone that day.
I will, I think I will.
I will be, but I, I can throw out a whole packet for you.
Um.
I'll, I'll be here.
Okay, cool, so Chad, potentially.
Okay.
Could be facilitator, um, but we also, you know, a hundred percent encourage you guys to come, um, even if you can only spend some of the time with us, I would be really great, they have you. Um, so, so, yeah, if you can let me know, chat, um.
Yep.
So now, Allison, Karen, if you're interested, Tom, sorry, if you're interested in, uh, facilitating or at least being backup facilitators, since we have, we don't really know how many people will show up, uh, that would be great as well.
Is there a rain day?
No, this is rain or shine.
Rain, snow.
Twenty second, even extreme cold polar vortex.
Yes.
Yeah, don't bring the weather, please, I'm flying to DC that day, unfortunately, I will not be here.
Hey, thank you, um, alright, anything else from the community development office, Michelle, you're good, Jenna? Okay, alright, moving forward, citizens wishing to address the commission, is there anyone here that would like to address the commission, please step forward, state your name and address? Hello, sir?
Three, two, three, five, three, nine, City of Dexter. Uh, Kyle has a blue there, uh, council of interest, so that's go in there, saying nothing again. CIP, I noticed that we do have something in there for the border to borders for connection, but there's no money allocated till twenty three, aren't you guys want to allocate money?
Twenty three.
Okay.
Well.
Well, ain't gonna allocate it, ain't there without an explanation?
Well, I think that's why we're gonna, he's asking us to study it. Uh, what the amounts could be, because I don't think we've ever had an amount for it, other than. How about ten million grand?
Ten million, yeah, that'll do it. That'll do it.
And I think that's it, thank you.
Some, thank you, sir, is there anyone else that likes to address the commission? Seeing no one and no one online? Alright, moving on, old business, item eight, we have no business, so item nine, new business, Kentwood Place, final PUD plan, uh, Mr. Culver, as remembered, is recusing himself. And with that, do we want to have staff, are we gonna go to our applicant first, have them do their presentation?
I will do their presentation.
And then you're gonna rep, okay, um, so if the applicant would like to step forward?
You have a PowerPoint, but she's gonna go. Hold on, Candace, she's coming. Matt, how about if I read it, while they're doing that, I'll read into the record.
Okay, yes, thank you.
This is the, uh, final site plan for the planned unit development known as Kentwood Place. Excuse me, um, application was received September tenth, twenty twenty four. Final site plan revision dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, and received January ninth, twenty twenty five. Response letter dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, and received January ninth, twenty twenty five, and the development agreement received November sixth with, um, red line comments from the city man, uh, city attorney.
Hi, great, thank you, and with that, if the applicant, you may start your presentation, please.
Thank you, hi, everyone, I'm Candace Frye with Midwestern Consulting, I am happy to be here tonight to discuss the Kentwood Place project. Um, just a little refresher, so, um, the planning commission did recommend, um, approving an ad in sleeve for the preliminary site plan back in July of last year. Uh, and then that preliminary PUD site plan was approved by city council at the end of July. Um, so we've been working with city staff and consultants for several months, and we're here tonight for the final PUD site plan. Um, as I mentioned, I'm Candace Frye with Midwestern Consulting, I'm here tonight with Pam Burns Brown and Kent Brown, the applicants and owners of the property, as well as Brad Moore, the architect, um, Jim Heister's here on a consultant basis as well. Um, just for some context, I'll run through this relatively quickly, because I think most of you probably remember this project from the times we've been here before, but, um, the site is located northwest of Baker Road and Forest Street, um, across the street from the post office. Um, there's a sordid, single, multi-family residential office, commercial uses all around the site. Um, the public parking lot is immediately adjacent to the northwest property line. Um, it's a block to the Mill Creek Park, less than a block to Monument Park, so definitely part of the city's downtown fabric. Um, the existing zoning on the site is CBD, Central Business District, um, all the surrounding properties are also zoned CBD. The future land use map designates it as downtown, as similar to all of the surrounding properties, um, it's also located within the DVA boundary. And the Downtown Development Strategic Plan strongly recommends the addition of residential uses within this area. So CBD is a form-based zoning district based on site types and street types. Um, so this site is comprised of two parcels, the parcel that fronts on Baker Road is a site type A on a corridor street type. And the parcel that fronts on Forest Street is a site type E on a downtown E street type. Um, because the property on Baker Road is currently vacant, there are no building forms permitted by right. Um, it could be converted, if it was a single family house, it could be converted, um, but the site's vacant, so makes it a little special. Um, two family buildings are permitted with special approval. All of the building forms, except for single-use buildings, are permitted by right on the Forest Street parcel. So because of the uniqueness with the vacant parcel on Baker Road, it was determined the path forward, um, would be a PUD. As I mentioned, the site's comprised of two parcels, which together are just over three quarters of an acre. Um, the Baker Road parcel's currently vacant, but the Forest Street parcel has an existing single-family house and a couple of garages, outbuildings on it. Um, that property is currently being used as a rental. Um, all of those structures will be removed as part of the proposed development. Um, each parcel also has one existing driveway curb cut, one on the Baker and one on the Forest. So the proposed project, um, we are proposing sixteen residential units across five buildings. So Building A, which is, um, the building that fronts on Forest, is a multi-family building with one townhouse unit, two stacked flats, and two micro units. Building B, which is just behind it, is a traditional townhouse building with five units. Building C and D, which, if you're moving clockwise around from Building A, um, those are both duplex buildings, each have two units in them, and then Building E, which is the building which fronts on Baker, um, is a two-family building that includes two live-work units. Um, we are proposing sidewalk connections throughout the site to promote pedestrian access downtown and to provide connections between Baker Road and that public parking lot. Um, we're working with the city to finalize and record onsite and offsite pedestrian events, um, to facilitate this, this access. Um, vehicle access will be provided from the existing curb cuts on Baker and Forest, which will be modified to accommodate two-way traffic. Um, twenty-two proposed vehicle parking spaces, um, onsite, all within proposed garages, the driveways are not deep enough to accommodate, driveway parking, so all of the onsite parking is in the garages. There are seven on-street parking spaces immediately adjacent to the property frontages, so it's assumed that most visitors will utilize those spaces. Um, there are eight proposed bicycle spaces with additional space for bike parking within each of the garages. Um, there are some open space areas onsite as well, which include a small pocket park, um, and a pedestrian platform for community gathering and possible use for special events. Um, to dig a little bit more into the parking, so there is no minimum parking that's required for developments in the CBD zoning district. However, um, per section five oh five C of the zoning ordinance, a maximum number of parking spaces for all uses other than single-family shall be the number of spaces listed in the schedule of minimum number of required parking spaces by use multiplied by one point two five. So, single-family, two-family, and multi-family dwellings not within the CB, the CBD would all require a minimum of one parking space per dwelling unit. So based on this requirement and the sixteen units that we're proposing, the maximum number of parking spaces we could have onsite would be twenty. Um, we are proposing twenty-two spaces, as I mentioned, all within garages. Um, so I think that's noted as a deviation that we would need, because we're exceeding that maximum parking. Um, but we feel that since all of the proposed onsite parking is located within attached garages, and the additional parking spaces won't result in an increase in impervious surface area on the site, that that seems a reasonable request. Um, as I mentioned, there are also seven on-street parking spaces immediately adjacent to the property frontages, there's two on Baker and five on Forest, that's just immediately adjacent to our boundary, there's, um, many more. um, many more beyond that. I think we actually counted sixty-four existing on-street parking spaces within three hundred feet of the site, and that doesn't include the spaces in the public parking lot immediately adjacent, so plenty of public parking available around this site. Um, touching on utilities, we are proposing a new eight-inch water main connecting to the eight-inch main in Forest. Um, Building E will utilize an existing water lead coming from Baker Road. Buildings A and B both have meter rooms, so those will each have a domestic and a fire suppression service lead, um, one per building. And then for buildings C, D, and E, there'll be a new domestic lead and a new fire service lead for each unit. Um, there are two new hydrants proposed, um, on the site. Fire suppression is being provided in all of the buildings. Um, sanitary sewer lead will come from, um, Forest from the eight-inch main that's in Forest. And then there'll be one new lead provided for Buildings A and B and one per unit for Building C, D, and E. Um, infiltration testing was completed and we've got very good infiltration rates, so we are proposing an underground infiltration basement beneath the driveway, which has an emergency overflow outlet into Forest. Um, as far as public benefits, um, I'm not gonna run through all these. These are the same ones that, um, we presented at preliminary stage, um, none of it has changed, and I think everyone agreed with all those benefits at that time, so if you have any questions, we're happy to come back to those. Um, the next several slides are the floor plans and building elevations for each of the proposed units. Um, again, happy to come back if there's questions on those, but I'm not gonna run through those in extreme detail at this time. We did receive review comments from O H M, from the fire department, and from Carl Warren, as well as, um, staff review comments. We're committed to working with staff and consultants to resolve any of those outstanding issues and questions, um, as a condition of approval. Um, with that, we're happy to answer any questions or take any feedback, and thanks.
Hey, thank you. We may have some additional questions for you, and did, were you gonna wrap up a presentation?
Finally, I just wanted to add a couple of things from our review on page one forty-three to your just to keep in mind as you're making these decisions tonight. First, the increase in the number of stories due to the loft areas is being proposed as little areas. As we discussed earlier, this may not qualify as little stories when they're constructed. The tallest building form that could be built at thirty-one sixty-five Baker Road in the current zoning, it's Form D, townhouses and special approval, and that has a maximum height of three stories and forty-five feet. For eight twenty-four Street, the tallest building form is Form E, downtown mixed use, with a permitted form of a maximum height of four feet, four stories and forty-five feet. Also, in the applicant's packet, they showed the amount of coverage that some of these buildings could have. Because in the downtown, because under that current zoning, multi-use building that's four stories could cover a hundred percent of the parcel. So also keep in mind that that density was allowed and envisioned. The applicant proposes live-work units due to essentially the prohibition on first-floor residential for thirty-one sixty-five Baker Road. And that addition of those live-work units could be seen as a reason why to allow the additional height. However, that wouldn't apply to the other buildings that are in the interior or or front on forest. But heights of the, and then also to look at the context of all four sides or all five sides of development. You've got stuff that's facing Baker Road. You actually have something that's very unique proposed where the townhouses would face the DDA parking lot, the parking lot that's operated by the DDA. Those that would might, we feel like would enliven that area. And so that, and when you look at the buildings that are around that parking lot, that wouldn't necessarily be out of scale. And then also you have what's fronting forest. So to look at it from a three hundred and sixty-five degree perspective. And also that the CBD zoning district in the downtown future land use categories allow the most dense and tallest developments in the city. Understand that this is at the edge of that district, both planned and zoned. But type of density is what was envisioned. And again, where does that fall between what your vision is and what's there and where and what development should be? We have a number of recommendations on the last page of our letter in terms of small items that we feel that could be taken care of as part of conditions of approval. And then we have a listing of deviations, but I think staff has done a more complete job than us as always.
Okay, thank you, Megan. I may have some questions for you. I think Marcus, yep.
I'll be quick. One of the plans are in good shape. Final PUD consideration by the PC from an engineering perspective. We have been working with EPN for a while, as they mentioned, of ironing out utility comments that we had early on. They've addressed all those. We did have three comments in our report. These are more technical in nature and can easily be addressed during the construction plan review phase that would follow if the project were come forward through PC and council. So we don't have any, any concerns with the site isn't laid out in utility, speaking of they have, that you have in the plans. So we're here with questions if you have any.
Hey, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on. I don't know if we need a fire report. It looks like they're okay, so. I don't think there's anything from the.
I don't think Ed's online. Ed, you don't have anything to add to your report, do you?
Nope, not at all at the moment.
All right, thank you. Didn't mean to ignore you. I just figured.
Nope, you're fine.
It looks pretty straightforward. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on to Michelle.
Okey-dokey. Excuse me. Staff report just sums up what the previous conditions of approval were for the preliminary, how they've met them or what what minor things need to be done to, to meet them. Overall, they have done a very good job of addressing all those conditions of approval. As Megan mentioned, there are some deviations for height that are going to be needed. Part of that is there's much more detail in this set of plans than there were before. Excuse me, one of the conditions of approval was that there needed to be more detail. We didn't have detail in C, D, and E, if I'm remembering correctly. But we have all that detail, hence the habitable attic, the details on that, and the details regarding what space and how much space is proposed for those live-work spaces. Excuse me. The purpose and intent, the recognizable benefits, the qualifications for the PUD project, all of those, as Candace said in her presentation, are the same. They have not changed. If anything, they've gotten better, especially with the the suppressing of all the buildings regardless of what code wants or requires. So that's very welcome and having those buildings suppressed on a multiple family and on the live work, they have to. But on these townhouse units at this three and a half stories, code doesn't necessarily require it, not yet from what my understanding is. But fire department was very concerned that because you've got vertical units, if there was a fire, you want people to have the opportunity to get out of those buildings. And the suppression that they're proposing allows that. It's not like the same fire suppression that will be in the multiple families or the live work. It's what is that? And N F, N P F thirteen, the, the DC and I'm sorry? Thirteen, thirteen D. So it's a suppression, but it's not what would you call it? Correct. Thank you very much. So in the event that there was ever a fire, that suppression system will allow people to get out of the building. Oh, or out of their units, I should say. When it comes to the live work, as I've stated, we've got more detail than we had at preliminary. And so we know what the size of the units are. This does qualify as a live-above type work unit. And what you need to determine today is does the size of the unit and its configuration meet the intent of a live-work unit for that mix of residential and commercial that you wanted and that is master plan and zoning requirement on Baker Road? Parking is the same thing. There's a maximum, they're two over. They have provided the request. They haven't provided a parking study per se as what is required for a deviation consideration. But Ms. Bray did talk about how many units or how many parking spaces are in front of both of the parcels. And as I've noted in the staff report, there's over sixty parks, sixty public parking spaces in the DDA lot. And then we have a parking study that was done as part of the master plan update in twenty eighteen. And we know that there are over eight hundred parking spaces within a five-minute walk of downtown, which would include this particular location. So if Planning Commission has any questions, happy to answer that. There is a retaining wall that is noted on the plans and that the applicant has identified that the design and the construction details or the details would be provided, the structural calks would be provided for construction. The design of it is something that Planning Commission would, is normally required to see ahead of time. What what we're, what staff is asking is for you to decide if you're comfortable recommending administrative review and approval of this retaining wall that would come off Building E and screen portion of the driveway and the transformer add unit that would go there by that garage. So staff has got motions for you. The first motion is a a motion of substantial compliance with the, I'm sorry. The first motion is for approval, a recommendation of approval or denial with conditions. Oh dear, I really. You can recommend approval, denial, or condition. Please forgive me. The brain is going faster than my mouth can move. The you're looking to see if the final plan, as it's been presented, is or is not in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plan for Kentwood. Does it meet or it meets or it does not meet the intent of the PUD district? And three, does or does not demonstrate compliance with all of the development standards in sections nineteen oh three through nineteen oh five, and recommends approval or denial to the city council subject to the D V, to the determinations, deviations and conditions that are listed. The determination is whether the two proposed live-work spaces in Building E are or are not an appropriate size for workspace and do or do not meet the purpose and intent of live-work units. The deviations are for the different building heights, and I'm not going to read them all to you unless you want me to. I will draw your attention to deviation H, and that is, I'm sorry. There's a deviation. Deviation D. This was one that was actually in the body of both Carlisle Wortman's and staff's letter for preliminary, but staff, due to an oversight, did not get in into the conditions of approval. And that's for Building C. Shall or shall not be recommended to allow a five-foot south side yard setback where seven feet is required. All of the rest are the minor cleanup items that would be necessary. The one that I did miss that Megan does have in her letter, and that is you can provide a deviation for nine redbud trees to have a two-inch caliper when a two and a half is required. Staff isn't recommending that. That's why it's not in mind, but that is one that you can consider if you are so inclined. If you've got any questions or you don't feel that this is ready to be recommended, there is an action, there's a motion for postponement.
Oh, thank you.
We're all set.
All right, there is there's a lot here. Okay. So with that, Planning Commission, we have on page, what, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, our packet are the motions. This is a final, so if this was approved, passed by Planning Commission tonight, this would be the last time we would see it go forth to City Council. And with that, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make it if I don't have to read it.
No, but just cite the sections, please.
Okay, motion number one on page, all right, page fifty-eight of our packet. And the motion would say that this isn't substantial compliance, does meet the intent of the PUD, and does demonstrate compliance with all applicable developments. So I would recommend approval.
Okay, then we'll make it more. We can come back to the determinations and deviations. So, okay, so there is a motion for approval on the table. Do you have support?
Support.
Okay, support equally. All right, we are now in discussion. Questions for staff, our consultants, or the applicant?
Well, I think the live work are big enough. There's seven squares. If you take seven squares, I'm pretty sure they're like two feet each. And, and then seven is square, and the, you know, square root of one ninety-six is fourteen. That would be the size of the space. I'm not sure. So if you get some, you could be an artist, you could be an artist, you could be a therapist, you know, and have meet people there. I think they're just fine.
Any comments? That was one of our discussion items, size of the live work.
I mean.
And I did not have a basis for making a recommendation one way or the other, but that's a good reference.
I mean, I thought through it. It does seem it is small, but again, the intent here, I mean, we, it's kind of an untested product here in the city anyway. And I, and I think again, smaller sometimes might, the ideal hope would be that they outgrow that space and find somewhere else in the city, so.
But I don't think it's big enough, to your point, to have like a retail.
No, I don't think it's big enough for retail.
They have parking and support it, and so it would have to be something more like Karen was saying, office that.
Doesn't happen. I think the term that my Megan used was a microunit. A microunit. The, the key is, and this will get baked into the development agreement, is this isn't a home office. It's, this is a commercial space. And whether the the resident above uses it for their office or an office, a business office, or they lease that space out. This is not a home office. There is that distinction, because if it's a home office, it's no longer that commercial entity that you were looking for.
So would it be like taxed accordingly? I'm just trying, listening to what you're saying, like there would be actual like.
Oh, it's, it would be taxed as a commercial unit, yes.
I personally like that. It's kind of a small unit. You know, it's, it's a kind of a perfect, what's that town? They have Seaside, Florida. And they thought of everything. And one of the things they have are these little microspaces, right? Like you outgrow your, you've got a, doing great at the farmer's market, and you can't get a whole story, but you need to move somewhere that you can have a little more space and it's got heat and stuff. Well, here you go. So it's kind of a nice, one of those rungs of the, the business ladder that I think people can go up. So I like that. And I would encourage more small retail like this or small space.
Another one is Baker. Did you have a comment as well?
I've got a number of items.
Couple of comments, yes.
Yes.
The, I take it the visitors will be allowed to park anywhere on site?
I'm sorry?
Visitors can park anywhere on, along the
The visitors will be parking on, on public on-street or public parking lots. They won't be parking on-site.
So that, that'll be signed, no parking or something along those lines.
I've got notes on the plan that, yeah. You won't be parking behind any garages. There is nothing wide enough to be able to do that.
The, okay, the, in regards to the deviation for the parking makes total sense to go to twenty-two versus the twenty-one. I think that's one of the things that we need to talk to, the irrigation question. Yeah, irrigation should be provided. There's going to be so little that's going to be needed to be irrigated, crying out loud. But it does bring another question to mind that I had. There's that concrete pavement alongside of, I think it's Building C, where it's it's all paved to allow fire access. And yet the corner, what corner would that be? The westerly, northwesterly corner, the space that's allowed for a fire truck to get through there, apparently.
It, it, it's very narrow, but the fire department is comfortable with that.
So if they're comfortable with that, would they not be comfortable with it being as narrow as that further down? In other words, I'm trying, I would like to see a little bit little bit more green, if you will, or just for water percolation of that sort of thing in that area.
That was actually in staff's report. The fire department was willing to go down.
Right.
And the intensive or the decision of the planning commission was like, this was fine.
And I was part of that, that discussion. Okay.
I mean, it's, it doesn't necessarily mean you can't come in and now, but yeah, I don't know. I can remember part of that.
The question of tree caliper, I think it ought to be two and a half versus two, no question in my mind. I was stumped, quite honestly, about the species of trees that were being substituted. I had to look them up. They're, they're narrow and they're red. Seems like a lot of them, and I'm fine with that if, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something I'd have done, but I'm not the one doing it. So, yeah. They're weird. The the oh, also the home office question. I think it's mentioned in here that there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that addresses home office specifically. Am I right?
You have home occupation, you have live work. Home occupation is a home office or you're operating a business out of your office, but there are very narrow parameters in which you get a permit, that neither of those, home office or home occupation is what this is. This is live work. It's a commercial and a residential.
Okay. That's not, my question is, why isn't it defined in our zoning ordinance, the home? Or one of them you mentioned here isn't specifically defined in the ordinance, and I didn't look because I don't know.
So live work, all of the different types are listed on fifty-five. And the type that they're proposing is the live-above type, so the residential is on the top and the workspace is on the bottom. We do not excuse me, I'm so sorry. We do not prescribe square footage of commercial spaces anywhere in the city.
Okay, I have no issue with that whatsoever. It's only that it did catch, something caught my attention relative to the fact that there wasn't, something wasn't defined relative to the use of your house for.
Right, we don't define home office. That's something we certainly could. We don't require permits for it because a home office is different from a home occupation.
Okay.
As it's defined in the ordinance, and it's different from a live work.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm pretty much takes care of what I had here. My quick list of questions.
Yes.
This, this was probably, we've probably went over this in the preliminary. I just don't remember. Are these going to be condos or condos?
So, okay. They will have to come back with condominium documents.
So for the commission, I want us to think through, we've got a number of deviations here for height. And Michelle, could you, like, I have trouble. So we've got to base our CBD district right now, which is zoned. It's, that's a forty-five foot height limit. So explain to me again some of the rationale, because of these deviations that we have. These were based, some of these were based on the preliminary plan that we saw, correct? Or I'm looking at both, I don't know, Megan or Michelle, I'm not sure.
There were some details for some of the buildings, but there weren't details for all of the buildings. We now have all of the details and the architect has been able to refine all of the buildings, and so the information is much clearer than it was at preliminary. But so the height of the buildings technically haven't changed. They're still the same that they were. It's just that. How would you, how would, maybe I would improve.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is if the height limit's five feet in the CBD, and this is on CBD right now, what, why are we going through these deviations? Because this is one of the issues I'm struggling with.
So
right.
Right, because each of the building forms has so if it was a mixed-use building, then it could be up to four stories, up to forty-five. But if not, but they're proposing our live-work units, which have a specific type, and attached, attached with a family, which has a specific type, and a normal family building, and a duplex building. There's a lot of different buildings in here. You look at those different building types, all of them had different heights, because again, we anticipated that you would have certain building forms that would match
Right.
other things. So that's the reason for the variation.
Right.
I think the reason I, and I'm, I'm the part of the applicant if I get it wrong. But I think what happened between preliminary and final is also there was some more detail on building themselves, and some of the heights did change. And then when the number of stories is changed. And that sum was based on habitable space and whatnot, because at one point I were looking at these as four-story buildings, not counting the attic, habitable attic space as a half-story. Hey, Michael, the same thing being for us, and originally proposed. Then because of that, because of the definition of story, it, it, that's the reason for the request for the deviation. So those are all very technical details. But I think really the crux of your decision is does do the buildings proposed with the architecture and paint that they have, meet the standards, build the PUD, and looking at what the intent of the zoning is, what the intent of the master plan is, and also the context of the surrounding area.
So that's, yeah, so that's kind of where, that's where I'm struggling with a little bit, particularly with Building E, which is a one-fronting Baker. Because it, as, which this is really helpful, these plans, the cross-sections through the site, I mean, sorry, towers over the adjacent buildings, the houses, but again, those are one, one and a half, two-story buildings. It's as tall or slightly taller than a monument building behind it. But however, we've so it, when looking what's there now, say, context, so I'm trying to compare it to we, me, we've made decisions over the years to allow ideally a forty-five foot building of some form along this road. And so, so is it out of context with what's there now? I, I, I think yes, particularly Building E. And what, one of the reasons I'm struggling with that is the, is the attic space, the habitable space in the attic, because to me, the only reason additional height is there is for that habitable attic. And all that does is make the unit bigger and more expensive. So that's where I'm struggling, is this deviation would actually increase the price of, of that unit, I think, without question, because now it's a much, could be over a three thousand square foot unit. So that's, again, while we don't necessarily, as a commission, deal with economics and things, this is something that part of the bigger picture that we look at, is our housing products in the city and affordability and those type of things. And, and it has, how it relates to this is the height, the scale. Again, buildings that are fronting along the DDA parking lot, no issue, even along the ones with forest compared to, again, looking at the forest and what we've seen here as a committee commission and council ultimately, we've planned for a lot of this up and down Baker Road, so. But, but that's the point I'm struggling with, is the attic is, it almost, it's just this added-on tech. I would almost be better if there was a unit up there, because here we're just adding additional height to increase the price of that unit and increase housing in our city, or the price of housing. So that's kind of what I'm struggling with on that one. So I don't know, Megan, you got up, so I don't know if you have, can have something to add to that?
No, I just, I dug out our preliminary review from when you saw this in June. And at that point in time, we noted that the buildings, specifically Building B, was three stories and approximately thirty-six. We didn't have, we, we didn't have a, we didn't have the dimensions on there, so that was an approximate scale from us. So really, if you think about it, it's a difference from what you looked at preliminary to now of two and, two, two feet, a little bit more, and the half-story, and the half-story.
Well, yeah, the half-story, like, I don't, the stories are almost meaningless. It's all about the height, really, because I don't care. It could be one-story, fifty-foot building, for all I care. But I, but I understand that why you need to parse that out, because there's building codes, zoning codes. So you, you're right, and I look at that too, and I think as the commission, I want us, right, like, it's only two feet more, it's only like a foot hea- you, you're right. And I look at that too, and I think as the commission, I want us to, right, like it's only two feet more, it's only like a foot here. Again, the building as their plans indicate, alternative plans, you could put a large mixed-use building on the whole parcel. However, this is what, what's in front of us. So, um, and I appreciate it is for the addition of the live work units there. So again, that's another thought in there, which is something that we want required on that. But I would be interested to know, or to hear other commissioners' concerns on, or well, really regarding all the deviations on the height. But obviously maybe this one more in particular, but yes.
I really like the space in the attic.
They don't.
Cause I keep looking at these, you know, these proposed buildings, these two-bedroom condos that go for empty nesters. That's not enough space. It's just.
Yeah, they are two bedrooms.
I know, and this is two bedrooms, but it's also got this relief valve in the attic and like this, for, you know, other kind of things. I just thought, great, that's, that's a good use. And because it's the sloped roof, it's not gonna just look like a bigger building.
Yeah, it's a smaller space. That's why they were saying a half-floor almost, basically. That's correct.
I, I, I mean, I know our job isn't to make it more, isn't the larger ball. But I think it will look better. That not better? And why not use that space? I, I, that's my, I, I thought it was a plus. And for this, and for the city to have that kind of.
Could I comment on that?
Yes.
Because I tend to agree, but removing that space, that habitable space, is not gonna lower the height of the building height. Unless you also reduce height on the third floor.
On the floor, right.
So, so you're, or you could flatten the roof a little bit.
Right, that's true.
It's, uh, seems to me that, uh, it's space that's there, you might as well use it unless, like I say, removing it's not gonna help anything in regards to height.
Well, I mean, it could, but yeah, I, I understand your point. I thought of that same thing too, right? You gotta, like, the, the floor of this would have to shrink, otherwise you end up with like weird. Yeah, like not consistent with the surrounding. So again, these are our part of us. Did, did you have something relevant to add directly to this?
Well, kind of in that discussion, which, uh, we addressed it as far as the space is gonna be there for the roof to match the rest of the building. Just there. And that's why it's habitable space, they call it that. It's not, you know, a full eight-foot ceiling all the way across there. Norfolk is built probably hundred and fifty of these units, maybe two hundred. And. Yeah, he stopped calling it so.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. Doesn't matter how many.
Almost.
I figured, yeah.
Question on that is, a lot of people have the two, very, so they have even a two-person household, they have that. A lot of people work at home or they have one as a dad. And then with kids or grandkids that come, it's very popular to have that extra space for that. Uh, kids in college that come home, when they move down, it's very popular. Actually adds the appeal of property, because on a per square foot of living unit basis, it's lower than if you had full eight-foot ceilings and spread out.
Okay, good. That helps. Thank you.
Matt, I can help clarify.
Yeah.
Let's go through the deviations because.
Yeah, this has been very helpful, so I appreciate all the feedback.
They do not need a deviation for the height on the live work unit on building E. That's my error. So the deviations that they need are for building A and B to allow three and a half stories where only three is allowed. So they're asking for a half-story on buildings A and B.
Right.
Deviation for C and D to allow three and a half stories where only two and a half are allowed. On building C, this is where there's a height of, uh, a deviation to allow thirty-six feet, four and a half inches, where thirty-five feet is allowed. There's another, we've already talked about the side yard setback for C, so I won't say that one again. The deviation for building D to allow the building height to be thirty-seven, uh, feet, thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-seven feet, three and five eighths inches, where the maximum height is thirty-five. And then building E is not a height variance, it is a story variance to allow three and a half stories where three would be allowed.
Okay, so that takes out the G.
Cross out G.
Come back to your report.
Yep. Page fifty-eight in the motions.
Oh, okay, that may have been one of the. Yeah, so G is.
Right, initially it said to allow a height of thirty-seven and a half feet, basically where the maximum is thirty-eight. You don't need a variance.
Right, that's what I would think so.
That's my bad. I misread it when I was putting this together.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, and, and so again, touching on these other deviations, if there's, so I think we, the building E. Yeah, we've kind of addressed that, unless there's additional comments regarding that deviation. Michelle's cleared up a little bit, yes.
So there's, so there's no height deviation on E?
There's no height deviation on E.
Yeah.
Um, I, even though there isn't, I, and maybe there's something you guys can look at as part of this, because overall, really strong design. Love the layout, lots to like here. I do think E looks a little, you're running the risk of it looking a little out of place along Baker Road for the next however many decades it takes to get bigger stuff over there. And I wonder if potentially on building E, um, one of the things that's making it higher than, that, you know, the perceived height is gonna look really big because of that stair tower gable facing the front. And it looks to me from the section and from the, some of the details, you may be able to pull that gable down a bit and still retain enough head height in that scissor stair up to the attic. So if there's any way you could pull that roof down close to the top of those windows, it may actually help that perceived scale a bit, because you're not really gonna see that roof going back out of nine and twelve. What you're gonna see is that middle portion here, and that's, if there's a way to get that down, it might may play around with that. Um, and also could help with keeping them from being super matchy. And then the other question too is, are these all the same kind of color scheme, or are they gonna, are we gonna change up the colors a little bit to kind of?
Yeah, that was what I.
Break up it.
It doesn't look like what we did. Exactly what we have, but I was curious about materials. Cause that's a.
The material use, it's really nice. I like the stone on the foundation.
I don't think we've seen a material.
Yeah, I'm concerned.
Yeah, um, what are the colors, Bradley? You know what the colors are gonna be?
Yeah, that's.
So, so one of the things that, um, that can be in condition of approvals, if you want, or, um,
No, I knew, I don't know what we would, I mean, I would, I trust them not to make a really ugly carriage building of color, so I.
They all have to be different.
I feel, I feel.
Every brick has to alternate colors.
That's something that staff completely overlook, but it's something that, it's a design function.
Yeah.
Um, the question is if, I put it to you regarding the retaining wall design. If you're comfortable with staff doing it, staff can do that. If staff's not comfortable with the color scheme they provided, staff's gonna bring it back to you. So if you're comfortable allowing the, the color palette of the materials to be administratively reviewed, we'll do that with the caveat that we bring it back if we're not comfortable with it.
Yeah.
That would be one that we just ask who goes for you.
Other commissioners? Are you guys fine with staff with the color?
Yeah.
Yeah. You, you could, I would just work with staff, because you could, you could ask each one of us and we'll all say a different color.
So. So usually.
Bright pink is a nice one, you know.
Pinks and purples.
So one of the things.
Go what you think is nice.
One of the things that's required is a materials board. Um, and that's usually something that is, the applicant has to provide. And staff completely overlooked it to rem, to remind you and your, um, team to make sure that you provided that. So I'm trying to work around that by, um, having it done administratively. Those are decisions that have to be made, usually are made at final or before final.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have the materials on here.
Right.
But we just don't have the color. Like, that would be, I, I have a much bigger concern if we didn't have materials.
Yes.
Um, like, yeah, colors, yeah, you guys can pick what they're calling. Yeah, I'm not that concerned.
In regards to.
Wait, sorry, did you have something added really about? Oh, the pitch?
That might be bringing it down.
That might bring, let's step first.
Cool.
Passade along Baker, because the other ones, okay, yes, Mr. Hill.
In regards to the deviations for all of the buildings, where the, um, height is changing from one, from three and a half stories or whatever. They're, they're all slightly different than two and a half story, yeah. That doesn't tell me the height per se. Uh, and I couldn't pick it up on the drawing um, itself, relative to how that meets zoning ordinance as far as height goes. Now, am I missing something? The, when all of these, the A, B, C, D, or A, B, C, E, what we're talking about is deviations that pertain to stories, three and a half to three, or three and a half to two and a half.
That's for zoning, right.
Yes.
Building code may call them all three stories, they may call them four stories.
Well, my.
My building code is different from the zoning code.
Yeah, but my question is, if you, if you go to two and a half, or you go to three and a half to four and a half stories, and then, I know it's not. But if you're, if that allows you to go to fifty, sixty feet, then that's not what we can do. So it's, this doesn't tell me, because I couldn't really pick it off off. The height of the, yeah, the top of it. Yeah, died.
They're both, you know. Okay, so, um, I think, so if you, for, let's say building B. So it only needs a deviation of a half-story. And in terms of that, if you chose to recommend that when that was granted by city council, then that half-story is one half, but the other half is height in terms of feet. Now, height in terms of feet is taken by the type of roof. So when it's a pitch roof with a rail, comes halfway between.
Right.
So, and all of these are, you, if you take that somewhere within, you know, two and a half to, I, I'm gonna get my math on, but they're within three or four feet of what that was. What's not on the drawing is a line that shows where the required height maximum is. And then where their height is proposed, where you can see those two lines next to each other.
That's what I'm curious about. It's more relatable to me, but it might be, it might be, it might be something beyond what we're, what we need to talk about. I don't know.
That's, that, it's not something that's required on the set of, and so it would be unable to see it.
Right. Good.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I, oh, that else, were you gonna say something? No, I'm sorry. So how com, I mean, do you feel comfortable? Again, I mean, we're looking at the, I know it's confusing because, right, there's limitations on stories and limit, and then the height, which is in feet, so. Like you said, I think it.
It's interesting because there's a deviation for stories for each building. But the only two buildings that require additional height.
Yeah.
Are C and D.
Are C and D.
So that I think is the crux. We, we have to.
And remember, you're a form-based district, so the different building form types have different.
Yes, and the stories are in there too, so that's where it's, we're crossing between these like form and regular zoning and, and, yeah, but those.
Which is why we also ask them to provide the perspective for you. And while at first blush, you look at that and you say, oh, wow, some of these are gonna be a lot bigger than what's there. That's true, but even if it was a three-story building, it's gonna be bigger than what's there. Um, so does that extra story or half-story really, really make it that out of character versus an aesthetic look? That's gonna be subjective, but I think part of what makes the downtown and everything that's in it now and everything that's being added to it. So interesting is, everything isn't the same height. It's not always the same scale or mass. That variety provides a richness in staff's opinion. The, the question you've got to wrestle with is, it's got the forms, it's got to come through, like every, almost everything else with the exception of the Monument Park building. Does the extra half-story or the extra, what is it? Foot, not even a foot and a half. Put this out of range to be able to actually be approved for development.
I agree with what you're saying. And the only reason I raise, I mean, I have no issue with the variation and stories and variation in the site. I just like to know what that is, and I don't on the surface. And, um, and if, if in fact every development comes through with, with more than one building, uh, on the site, needs a deviation relative to stories or height, then is our ordinance a little too restrictive?
I, I don't think so. The other thing that we have to keep in mind is our ultimate goal is to have more density. This is an extremely, um, unique site. It, it, it's not perfectly square or perfectly rectangular. It's two, one inch, one regular shaped parcel with a, a hangnail is what I'm gonna call it. And, and so they're trying to design something that provides the density we're looking for in a, in an aesthetic that is pleasing. And there, that's where certain deviations are gonna end up being required.
Yeah, in.
Or necessary, I shouldn't say required, necessary, because whether it's required or not, that, that determination falls on you guys.
Yep. And I think, again, looking in the totality of everything, the existing zoning on the site, I think what we as a community have planned for along Baker Road is with the, I, I, I do like the addition of the front patio porch thing areas. I guarantee you there'll be people out there that I'll wave to every day when I'm walking by. Say, you're, you're sitting out there because I asked for that, if the project gets built. So I wanna tape, I wanna sit there. So, but, but, I mean, so I would say, yeah, I do, overall, I think it is a a, a really good project and it, it was challenging. I appreciate that because of the, what you just said, the shape and to try and get density units, I, it's really funky when you look at it, like I was talking to, uh, one of my neighbors and showing him this plan and walking by the site. And, you know, you look at the plan and somebody who does, is not familiar with looking at plan views and stuff, it's like, how the hell can this work? That, no way, this is cramming in buildings, but I think it's pretty cool. So because of the uniqueness of it, it's got that little, yeah, so, and, and I remember chat, you brought up the area, that large expansive pavement, I had questioned that too, but I know that there are utilities under there, there. So that was part of the reason with, with no trees, there's no str, no, no benches in there, because I, right, I would encourage you guys to, if there's, cause right, it's a huge kind of just concrete. I mean, there's gotta be something you can do with that area there, right?
That, that particular apartment.
Yeah.
And you see, those, those folks got nothing to look at, but.
Yeah, you're resident, I mean. So we'll see if there's any way to lessen up some kind of greenscaping along that a, area, that would be great. Um, so again, I think with the, the building E I brought up is a concern, but I, I feel pretty confident talking through this. And again, at least initially through the thought process of looking at the, the master plan of this and all the, the plan in its totality. Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's good. So, uh, yes, Mr. Marsh.
I have one small thing to add onto that, which is the, since you were on that. that um concrete area. Um, you know, it also kind of ties in with potentially, one thing I noticed was the sidewalk, and we're gonna walk from the parking lot around the building. We're gonna take a right and walk kind of behind the buildings and then kind of go all the way to this one corner and then take another right, and to me, that's kind of a a bit of a fantasy. I don't know that anybody's gonna like go all the way to that corner and do a right. So maybe like, we can kind of make the sidewalk a little more organic and and it actually have it start to cut across that part, maybe that gives you a chance to put some landscaping in the back and you see, maybe it kind of swoops as it goes across this area, this drive, or you know, that. You know, I, I just think that it's, it's actually gonna take more of a of a natural path.
Yeah, it will.
I know where people are actually gonna walk.
Yep.
And so it's a minor thing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, put that in Tom's court.
That's a good point, that's a good point. Okay, so let me check through here our DV, make sure we've got our uh we all, generally it sound like we're okay as a commission with the size of the work units, the live work units, um.
So you're gonna need to make formal determin.
Yeah, so we're gonna.
Finish the, it will finish the motion to have them.
Yeah, and then the maker of the motion will go through and say, do you do not, um, deviations, it sound like in general, well, we removed G as a deviation, but the other ones, it sounded like there's general support. Um, the parking, again, it sound like we're supportive of the parking. Uh, the wall design, yep, absolutely, that I think I heard we're fine with staff doing that. Um, we'll ask once.
If that's gonna be fine, then the C where it says retaining wall, including materials.
Oh, yeah.
You could cross that one off, um, if you're allowing administrative review and approval.
C and D, right?
No, structural calculations do need to be provided with the construction plans.
Oh, with the construction, okay, yeah, clarify, okay, right. What I mean, okay, so I think the question, and then we added the uh.
The administrative review and approval of the materials.
Of the colors.
Construction color palette.
Correct, and then also, we did not include the red bud wave around here, staff did not, it.
Right.
So I, I assume by leaving this out, we're not supporting that, which I wasn't gonna support anyway, but but I just wanna make sure that people didn't wanna include that, the, the two and a half to two inch caliper. Oh, okay, okay, perfect. Um, okay, so I think that, so Roberts, you made the original motion. Oh, wait, did you? No, I thought.
Aaron made the motion.
Okay, yeah, I thought.
Between your court.
So if you just wanna repeat the uh, through the determinations, the uh, yeah, like whether you do or do in the, we do have to read through the deviations.
Okay, we do, okay. Well, all right.
Or can we just say, can we shorten the deviation of building C shall not, or should technically?
It's shall on all of them.
So.
So we could.
Let's, let's start with determination.
Yes.
Planning Commission determine it, determine determines, that determinates, the two proposed um, hundred ninety-six square foot uh workspaces and the proposed live work live above type live work units in building E are or are not, do or do not. I'm presuming that it's are and do, right?
Yes.
Okay. When it comes to the deviations, I think you already said it, um, they would all be in the affirmative shall. And then number three, that's the administrative review and approval of the retaining wall design, um. Um, including the materials to be used in construction, shall be recommended. And then C comes out because you recommended that one, um, A comes out because you found, you determined that appropriately. And then it's just the addition of um the administrative review for the um color palette of the buildings, yep.
Okay, are you clear on that, Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I intercheck.
Yes.
Count tree caliper, he hasn't mentioned anywhere.
Right, because we're not. When they said they fixed it anyway, but we're also not gonna recommend it, so.
All right.
Yep. Um, and then, so with Heatley, I have you as seconded, seconding the original, do you also second the revised motion? Okay. Okay, so is everybody clear on what we're, what we're voting on here? Is everybody ready for a vote? Okay, with that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Um, yep, Phillips. All back?
Yes.
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Hateley?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Yes. Right, it's approved towards council, thank you. Can we text the Tom?
Oh, he left because there's nothing else on your agenda.
Oh. But we could, I mean, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, he, he.
So I will just get, so we do have discussion of the capital improvements plan, so we can, it is nine thirteen, so I don't know if one, we could take a quick break if somebody wants, we could just plow through the CIP and I don't know how much discussion we may have, we, we can always postpone it, we can set the public hearing for next uh, next month and then discuss it again, or.
Whatever you want.
I will leave it up to the commission at this time. Again, if somebody wants a break, we can uh call for like a five-minute break, I'm fine, but if if not, um.
What else is on?
Uh, just the CIP is the only other item.
Discussing it, then I'd like a three-minute break.
Okay, let's discuss, so would, okay, well, so why don't we do that? Why don't we just take a three-minute break? Okay. So we'll be back at uh nine fourteen, but sorry, nine seventeen.
I know, I wanna go home too, but. Especially because I won't be here.
Absolutely. Doing a lot of, of the uh packets.
Okay.
So I kinda have to listen and then summarize.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, I don't. No, just, just the main point.
Sorry, that was an unDexter-related issue. Yes, not a Dexter-related issue. Okay. We're, we're missing two people, sorry, we still got members of the public. All right, what do you think you are, anyway? Oh, wait, where was our, uh, we're missing two, but.
Missing one, you're missing Kyle.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Tom left, so, uh, well, I don't have to call it back to work, all right, we're back in session. Um, okay, so next up on the agenda is the uh capital improvements plan discussion. Michelle or Jenna, who's gonna?
That'll be me.
All right, lucky you.
Yes. Um, okay, so we've compiled uh the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, or, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty uh CIP for, for you. Um, you, you know, I, I will go and read through here, but uh, summary being that there's now seventy-four capital projects compared to seventy-three um, in last year's in the FY twenty-four to twenty-nine CIP. Um, that doesn't mean that we just lost one, there's been some that were um, removed, some that were added. Uh, you can see that in the table that was provided for you, the table changes. Um, but pretty much mo- most things have remained the same. Um, having said that, there have also been um some decreases or increases to the proposed um expenditures, uh, which is also all noted uh within, within that table. Um, one difference, which we think is definitely for the better um, is that ClearGov, the uh, the system that we've been using, the platform uh, which you were introduced to last year as well. Um, they did a really great thing, which is to introduce this ClearDocs platform. Um, it's still a little cumbersome, it's still, it's an initial kind of uh rollout. Um, but at least it puts together all of the information really nicely, rather than um, myself or any other staff member having to, you know, put it together manually, basically, for all intents and purposes. Um, and it gives us a nice uh table of contents and um, other functions as well. You will notice in your draft that there are some formatting issues, I did discuss them with ClearGov this morning. Um, and so they're helping me, they're very, very great in terms of customer service, so they're helping me um, figure out what to do and how to work through some of those formatting issues that you would see. Um, so just as a brief uh summary of the, the table of contents um, having just a quick overview, which really gives the reader an explanation of how to read this thing, um, all of the different kind of phrases that are used um, et cetera, just a, just kind of a reader's guide, if you will. Um, then right up front, we'll have the adoption resolutions um, as well as the schedule of CIP adaption um, which just provides information about when, when CIP is, is gone to a public forum, um, so planning commission today. It's also gone to the Parks and Recreation Committee um for their input, for their section as well. It's also gone to DVA, which reminds me that we need to add that um, for their input on, on that section and on economic development um projects. Um, then we have the executive summary, which uh, you know, really just does exactly that. Um, gives some synopsis on the programming, the goals and policies, um. Et- et cetera, and then there's the CIP perspectives, which um, ClearDocs puts together automatically for us. Um, so it, it gives you the CIP, um, first by by the first year being fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and then by all of the years, and then it sorts it by capital program, sorts it by departments. And then sorts it by expenditures. Um, for, it's, you know, it's the same information, but just provided in different uh, different perspectives. And then lastly, this is also all compiled by uh ClearDocs, is the capital projects with seventy-four capital projects within ten, um, what we're calling capital programs. The capital programs are the buildings, grounds and equipment, DDA, parks and rec, planning and zoning, et cetera, streets and alleys, et cetera, and then, like I said, there's seventy-four project pages that fall under each of those, um, those capital programs. Uh, a couple of items that I just wanted to um bring to your attention um, in terms of getting feedback, um, uh, potentially. Uh, page one eighty-two of your packet um, is municipal funding sources. That was an item that was part of last year's um CIP, and it appears that it was likely part of um, of several other CIPs um, in the past, because if you read through here and then you're like at the end-ish area um, it has, it has some kind of outdated information, um. Or, yeah, so like, for instance, the bottom of page one eighty-two is of February two thousand and seven. The city funded one bond series for one point seven million, et cetera, et cetera. So my first question is whether or not um you think that there's a reason to keep this information in the CIP, um. You know, some of the expenditures, right, would come from from some of these fund sources, but not all of them. Um, so like, for instance, like generally, the fund sources are the general fund um, or like the water sewer, or water fund, or the sewer fund and things like that. Um, generally, you know, you're not going to have something come from weight and gas tax, for instance. Um, you'll have something come from like the street fund or the major roads fund. Um, so I just wanted to get your two cents, I mean, obviously being new, I'm not sure if there was previous conversation about this last year or not, and then the, the second kind of follow-up to that is that if you do wanna keep it um, do you think that we should like update the, the information, like is there rationale why the two thousand and seven information, for instance, was kept last year?
It shows the history. But, yeah, I do have an update that I can give you. For this, uh, because there was the bottom for the.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing is just, it's a minor kind of formatting thing, um. But unfortunately, ClearDocs does not believe that they're gonna be able to fix it, at least this go-around. Um, but if you'll notice, um, let's say page um, one ninety-four as an example um, that all of the projects have ID numbers, um. Um, these were put in, I, I'm not exactly sure when they were added. Um, and then in some instances, the project descriptions will re- reference another project ID. Um, you can see here that they're not in order. Um, the document, you know, like I said, it's, it's, um, you can have these different perspectives, but none of the perspectives allow you to do it in order at this point. Um. You're right.
It's fine.
So, uh, the question, I guess, is, do you all think that it's a big enough deal, right? For us to go through each page and change the ID numbers so that at this point they would be in order? Um.
Well, I thi- I mean. How much of a? Yeah. It's like, that's.
It's significant.
It, it, no. I mean, I think, I, I think the key, yeah. And I don't know. Plan Commission can give you the best answer as general. But I mean, as, as long as you guys can, if the information is correct and you guys can make sense of it ultimately, uh, of where it's at, I feel comfortable, other than devoting staff time to clearing this up. If it's just. A time suck in a way and, and the information is there, it's just kind of disorder. You know, it's like, I know what you mean. It's just weird.
It's sorted by amount.
It, it. Yeah. So why couldn't they sort? The letters are, I don't think it's.
It's not.
I mean.
I don't even know that it's sorted by amount.
Is that?
Um.
That's.
Because when you look at the projects, uh, under streets and alleys.
Yeah.
It does look like that. And then. A, a six oh one B.
What is?
Is four hundred and forty three thousand, but six oh one C is five hundred thousand.
But all the numbers.
Same first thing, the same thing you did was, oh, it's just by the amounts. Okay.
But the numbers are all.
By the total.
I'm sorry?
By the total. Yeah. The total.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
Well, it seems like there'd be.
Well, yeah. And in this perspective, but there's other perspectives, right? Also that give you like by expenditure. Uh.
But they don't rank it by project number.
Right.
So.
At least not this year.
Yeah.
Remember, we've been saying for the last, this is the third year we've been with ClearGov. And this is, this is a huge improvement over what it was last year, um, where you had, uh.
Yeah.
It just, it was, this is a huge improvement. And I think Jenna's done an excellent job, um, creating this document to be the professional document.
Oh, yeah. It.
We've been more used to, but there are still things that we're transitioning through with ClearGov. So. If you're okay with these numbers, not.
Yeah.
In a, in an order.
I, um, first of all, let me, let me comment. Sorry. I'm stealing.
Go ahead. Chip, Phil and then. And I'm.
This is, as you say, this is a vast improvement over everything in the past. And I'm going to be candid with you. I never paid much attention to the dollars anyway. I pay attention to what's being stated on the individual sheets. And that's what I, I've marked a few things that I have questions about, but the, the dollar amounts, that's, that's staff and council.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's their purview and. Anyway, that's how I look at it and have always looked at it.
Okay. Yeah. And the same with the funding sources too, that you asked the question. I mean, that, that, I don't, it doesn't really mean much to, and it's more for your guys' reference. I mean, I don't have to figure out. Why did I just propose it?
Interesting.
But, I mean, it is interesting. That's why I think it could be updated and left in there, but I don't, like, I don't have any opinion on what that is. And we don't really.
Right.
Yeah. So. Yes. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, could we like, um, for, for the perspective that we can tell how it has sorted things? To add a line to say this, you know, maybe at the top that says it was sorted by.
Yeah.
Total. Just because if somebody from the public, you know, you have your.
Yep.
Pages you pay attention to, we have our pages, but if somebody in the public looks at it, they're like, what's going down? Um, for those that you can tell that it's like finding one of the columns to just reference that.
Yeah. That's a great idea, because otherwise you're going to get the same questions or probably at the next, this comes back to next planning commission. Whoever was here is probably going to, whoever wasn't here is probably going to say, why aren't these in order? At council, you're probably going to get, why aren't these in order? So, yeah, just add that little disclaimer on the top. So.
They aren't in order.
Um, but yeah, it was just in a different order. So, uh, Chat, so you had some, you had some questions?
I had a few. I, you know, as, as wonderful as this is relative to what it was, there's still an awful lot of.
Yeah.
Information here.
Mm-hmm.
And so let me make a couple of comments. One of them is downtown restrooms, which are so seriously needed. And I think.
Which, which page are you on?
I'm on page two fifteen. And I'm not sure if it mentions any one of them in specific, but one of the things that really annoys me to this day and will though the rest of my life. Is why the darn new fire station doesn't have public restrooms. It damn sure auto and it isn't there, but, um, and that's what brought my attention. But anyway, another one is, um. The Huron River kayak launch.
Which page?
That's page two fifty seven. I do not understand why a parking lot isn't part of that. People park along the road and now you're, and now it's going to be improved apparently to, to get down there, which is really, really good. But it needs a parking lot. There's no question it needs.
Oh, under the re- this is a regional, um.
Yeah. I know.
Oh, yeah. Cause this is outside of the city.
I mean.
But it's not under the regional page, so it's under our Parks and Rec.
Right. Right.
But yeah, I was going to say, that's not even in the city.
That's not even in the city.
The, um, and then back to the.
So, sorry. Should that just be taken out then?
I think it should get moved to regional.
Oh, yeah. Or get moved to regional, because we're going to be a partner, but it's not ours. Yeah.
And it should be emphasized too.
Yeah. Well, it should include a part.
Yeah. The, um. And then the last thing I have on here was that, and I know there's others here that I marked, but I can't find them. And it's like, the, um.
Email us when you get a chance.
Sure. The, um, on the Monument Park enhancement, the restrooms are mentioned again as a top priority. Two sixty three, and I totally agree with that. This, I mean, there was some discussion of the old, um.
Yeah. What is the?
So.
The subject, but.
This might, so what we. This does have the thing about restrooms, because currently there's just the temporaries.
Yeah.
In the, um, what was it? The very first one you talked about.
The other. Yeah. Right.
Um, the downtown restrooms. We can cite the project numbers.
Uh-huh.
Um, a decision has not been made. It's just been talked about. Um. Where that's going to go at this point is anyone's guess.
By the, by the way. I can. Again, go ahead.
Sorry. Add a little bit so that the last conversation we had at council and, uh. Um, potential of the site of, um, Hotel Hickman, the city owns that property.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, um, we are requesting to potentially look into what it would look like to have that as public restroom with a, um.
All right. I just realized that. So looking at the Hotel Hickman with, uh, um. As public restrooms with front being a welcome center of some type to have information about, um, the town, also potentially, uh, partnering with the historical society and the museum to be able to display some things there. Um, but having, so that's a, that's an idea that is, um, somewhat being looked at. We haven't really gotten into in depth in that, but that's something that actually, um, I'm really. Um, it, it's something that I would like to see that at least we look into and, and getting some.
I like that.
Possibilities.
I really like.
Cause I think that, that not only helps with the restroom issue, but also with potentially, you know, having the ability of a welcome center, something that we can showcase things in partnership with the museum and the historical society. I think it could, it could be fantastic for us.
Um, but. I agree. Totally agree. One of the things I have noticed in Ann Arbor, there are portable restrooms that they're using now, like at the Plaza. What are they?
The Thrones.
The Thrones, they call them, but they look like they're clean. They're big enough to get in and out of. They're not.
They are actually, which is strange.
Yeah. They're not portageons. They're upgrades. And I figured, geez, as long as you're going to do portables, you might as well do them right, like the city is doing, city of Ann Arbor is doing now.
I, I've had a similar thought. Can we just get new, new portageons for now? The ones up by Monument Park are getting, getting out there and.
Yeah.
Usage.
We need, yeah. So, okay. That's a whole nother subject, but yeah.
Yeah.
This, we all know we desperately need those restrooms. So with the downtown, um.
Did you?
Any other issue or? But, uh.
Not right now.
Questions right now.
Yeah.
Um, yes, Karen.
Really quickly. One thing I didn't see on the sheets when you get to, I, and maybe I'm missing it, but the priority.
Yeah.
There's a table that has.
Yeah. There used to be a priority ranking on all that. I was going to add about that.
If that can be added without major surgery.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's another issue that I've looked into with ClearDocs. Um, they don't, they don't provide it right now. Um, in the, in this document, um, potentially we could have like another table in the beginning that provides like a prior, you know, priority of each of them.
Well, isn't.
That would be something.
There is. Well, they, it's in there somewhere. It's just that, um, as I'm looking at the sheet, I'm going, is this high, medium, I forget how it's.
Yeah. The, the little ranking system. But staff, but we do have them ranked, because like ultimately, I mean, that ranking system is used by staff council to, to ideally, um, you know, assess money and stuff going forward. So there is a ranking system in here, though. Wasn't it just in the, but it's not on the individual sheets?
Yeah.
It was a, there was an explanation of it in the writing.
Yeah.
Um, it was the justification and the priorities.
Yeah. It provides the information as to how it was ranked, but the sheets themselves don't include that information. So I could make a table that would be in the beginning.
No. I mean.
It's in here. I mean, you don't have.
Yeah. I don't think that would, is, yeah. I mean.
No, I was just thinking, you know, one little, you know.
Yes.
So what she's trying to explain to you is she can't put justification numbers or the priority numbers in this anymore. So, um, in the written portion, it explains how we come to those. Um, and she could do, um, it would be less time consuming for her to do a little table that lists all the project numbers and their names with their priority and their justification than it would be to try and manipulate.
In the document. So, yes, I think that would.
Work sheets. Maybe that'd be better, more efficient.
Yeah. I think that would be more efficient. Right. I don't know that we need them in here. And as long as it's obvious for decision makers and things going forward, there are ranked and prioritized at one somewhere that's clear.
Right.
But not in here. Right. We can't, I get it with computer programs. You can't change it. It's one way or it's an add on and these millions of dollars and so on, so forth. Um. Under question, I noticed that the Huron, the, the connector is added on here, that Huron River Farms or whatever I mentioned.
Because it.
As a.
It got pulled out. It got.
Right.
Back in, it got pulled out, it got put back in. So it's in here.
Yeah.
Um, but to the point of, uh, whoever was making it before, then maybe it was just you. Um, um, we'll do the research on.
Yeah.
What it could eventually cost.
I, I think that exactly. And, and again, this could be part of a larger discussion, uh, for planning commission. If you want some direction, I'd like to hear other planning. I mean, I know Commissioner Phillips is, is supportive of that, but, but I, again, I don't want to just be one directing, but I think it's a really, really important goal. And I'd like to start a discussion about it because it, it may be possible now. So.
So are you saying that potentially an at grade pedestrian crossing may be allowed by whoever?
Things, things have changed. There, there's, or, or there may be other options that are, that are, even if it's not necessarily at grade.
Are you?
There's other options that are possible.
Over to railroad tracks?
Yeah.
I mean, that's no, it's never going to be possible.
It's a new owner. It's, there's new owners, there's new, and I know they want it for high speed rail, but they've had luck in other new, other communities are getting some great crossings for trains.
New ones? Or ones that previously existed and are being upgraded.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you just send Jenna the information that you've got?
Yes.
And we'll do the.
That's part of it.
For.
Right. We'll just have, I, I wasn't directly involved, but I have some sources that I can send. But yeah, I think in, as long as we do what the city's done so far, and when was the last time we looked at it in that thing? And then I've got a couple, and then otherwise, and Steph could do a little bit of background. I think that would be helpful. Um, but you're right. I mean, may still, I know it's still going to be cost prohibitive. Well, I don't know. Actually, it might not be. And my point also would be is maybe, obviously I'm a huge proponent of sidewalks, but maybe instead of like, maybe we can shift some priorities instead of necessarily having a sidewalk on every side of every street, which I generally support. Maybe we can shift some priorities at getting a vital connection there, rather than adding sidewalks on streets that might not necessarily need them in certain ways, or there's other options. I just think it's as important to me as the Westridge connector was.
I think it's either over or under, and it's going to be very expensive.
I know.
In your case. I mean, you look into Ann Arbor, the recent one there at, uh.
Yeah. Well, the tunnel, they went under. We could go under the ton, we could go under the railroad track.
Nevertheless, I, I've dealt with them forever.
And there's grants. I mean, going under the railroad tracks was.
It would be great. Anyone could do that. And you know, a bridge over.
You gotta get down and then under.
They got that ridge on the one side that's real high.
Mm-hmm.
You just have to figure out how to get off it.
Right.